Hey everybody, we are live. We are talking about school boards today. There is a calculated effort with elected school boards across the country to dismantle public education. We are going to discuss with one specific example here in my community with North Harrison High School, how they are doing it and what we can do to stop it. If we can work together and get the word out, we can save our public schools and save our children from this dismantling. So I'm with my co-host Scott Aaron Rogers. You ready to do this, Scott?
I am. Let's uh, let's get going this Sunday morning.
Yeah, I want to thank Scott for doing this with me. I asked him last night, um, pretty late and he got on board and then he started, um, he started researching for me. So thank you all, for those of you that are on, I asked a lot of friends to come on and help. Um, and it, and then I have friends fact checking us because we are talking about an ongoing lawsuit with North Harrison Community Schools. And if we say anything wrong live on air, we're going to have people fact checking us and we will correct it on air. We will also be saying allegedly a lot so that we do not get sued ourselves. So that's why we say the word allegedly, because the person that we're talking about likes to sue people. Fun, fun, fun.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 yeah. The lawyer, get the lawyers. That's how you do it in America. You get the lawyers. Okay, guys, do you all know, Scott did not know this, do you all know that in North Harrison, school board election was intense? And um, I had a viral video. I had about 9,000 views on my own Facebook when I did like a seven-minute live uncovering the fact that two people that used to be bus drivers for North Harrison Corporation are suing this school for what I've been told $850,000. Um, his name is Michael Byerly and his wife Jennifer Byerly have a lawsuit against the schools that my children attend, that a lot of kids that I love attend. And here is the lawsuit. You can search for it online. Um, it is a public record. There's not much detail on there, but we are not talking about, we are not spreading fake news here. This is a real lawsuit ongoing right now. Um, and Michael Byerly is also township trustee in one of our communities in Harrison County. Um, he has been actively involved in the county in trying to get power for a while. He used to be on the North Harrison School Board with Gary Byrne, who is now our state senator. Um, so I'm going to tell this story and Scott, if I'm not making sense, can you ask, interrupt me and ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely. Cause I'm not, I'm not familiar with the inner workings of your community's school.
I did not know, I did not know about Michael Byerly. I was running for state house. I was speaking up for public education when I started getting some anonymous sources coming forward telling me about this lawsuit. And they were, they had people involved in the school board themselves and they were trusted sources and I had several of them. So I eventually went public with the information. And here is what I was told. Michael Byerly and his wife Jennifer Byerly were bus drivers for North Harrison. The busing situation at the school system is interesting and takes up a lot of time for school board members. They get to bid on their own prices and their own bus routes. And um, Michael Byerly apparently researched the laws, found some loopholes and changed it, changed the law or changed the bidding structure. And because of those changes, they went with other people that bid lower than Michael and Jennifer, who are asking for, in my opinion, a lot of money for a bus route, for daily bus route. Um, so they were, they were outbid. So they were not, their contract was not renewed. This was a hundred percent from what I understand, talking to lawyers, legal. The school system did absolutely nothing wrong in not hiring Michael and his wife as bus drivers. Um, so then Michael and Jennifer Byerly filed this lawsuit in 2023. And from what I've been told, they are suing the school for $850,000. Now, this lawsuit has no merit. I talked to lawyers that know about this case. He should not be getting one penny. His, he should be paying the school's lawyer fees. The school has already paid quite a bit in lawyer fees because of this lawsuit. So this is already hurting our kids' schools, the public education, the, the low amount of funding we already have because Indiana State is trying to dismantle public education and give our tax money to, to private and charter schools already. So we're being attacked, North Harrison's being attacked at the state level and now by former bus drivers, okay? Um, at the local level. Michael Byerly ran for school board this past November 5th. I was like, when I found out this story, I'm like, what? The person that's suing the school for $850,000 is also running for school board? And then I was told if the school system decides to not go to court and decides to settle, the school board members decide how much money Michael and his wife get, okay? It seemed like a conflict of interest, like maybe he shouldn't be allowed to run for school board since he was suing the school, but we don't have that in our law. He was allowed to run. So once I found that out, I made this video, it went viral, about 9,000 people saw it. A lot of people shared it. I hoped that would prevent him from winning. Well, he came in second. So yay, he didn't win. But guess what? His friends won, okay? So his friends, Steve Nix and Angie Byrne, who is Gary Byrne, our state senator's wife, won. I actively campaigned with two of my friends, Jama Goodman, Brian Tenter. Both of these are Republicans. They're good Republicans in the community. Um, I had, I had Brian on my show or on my live. I openly took pictures with Jama. Jama wore my shirt. We all had signs of each other up in our yards. We did everything we could. And Jama especially is very well-liked in our community. She's a former teacher, a sub. She has children that attend the schools. She's very well-liked. She had a chance. Brian, I didn't know because he was up against Angie Byrne and that Byrne name is very big in our community. They, they really think these people are trying to help us. Um, guess what happened the night before the election, Scott? This was so.
What happened?
I was so stressed out. I'm running for state house. I'm trying to help Tim Peck get elected. I'm trying to help Jennifer McCormick get elected to save public education. I'm pretty stressed out at this point. I'm also going through my cancer scare that I kept quiet until after election. So that was fun too.
Yeah.
Um, I wake up to a text from Jama saying, Sarah, did you do this? Did you do this? And she sends me a screenshot. Can you pull it up? During the night, I need to hide this thing. How do we hide that? During the night, um, mass amounts of people in the North Harrison School Corporation were texted this text and it's sneaky. It looks like I did it. It looks like I. Now remember, Jama and Brian are open Republicans, okay? And Brian also calls himself a libertarian. But here's the text, okay? Vote blue on November 5th. Vote for progressive values for our community. And that picture is the picture of North Harrison School Corporation. It's the mascot picture. So it looks like the school sent it and it also looks like I sent it, okay? So that sounds fine. Vote for progressive values. Vote for these candidates who will be strong LGBTQIA+ allies. Support reproductive freedom. Protect trans rights in sports and bathroom access and support migrant families. Kamala Harris for president. Sarah Blessing for state rep. Ashley Black or Jama Goodman for North Harrison School Board. Blue River, two great choices. Brian Tenter for North Harrison School Board. Morgan, vote for progress. And then it doesn't say who paid for the text. So when you first look at it, it looks like Democrats sent the text or the school sent the text, but actually, none of us did. It was sent by somebody who wanted to make sure Angie Byrne and, and Steve Nix won. That's what I'm assuming, assuming, don't sue me, okay? Now we know the phone number that was sent. We, my husband tracked it down. It was sent by a mass texting agency in Indiana and they were, they got money to send this text out. It's illegal. This text message is illegal in, I believe, two ways. I talked to several lawyers. I even talked to a, um, oh, I can't think of what they're, I talked to.
Campaign finance person, yeah.
I talked, I talked, yes, and I talked to Adam Dickey, the district nine chair about it. It was illegal in, and I think two ways. In, in the state of Indiana, it's illegal because you're not supposed to send text messages to people without their consent. And then it's illegal nationally because you're not allowed to put a national candidate, Kamala Harris for president, on a text message without paid for by, and then who paid for it. So I did try to get the FBI involved. However, a lot of fake text messages in Indiana and across the country were sent out day of election, night before, just like ours. Not even, even in Indiana, like colleges, like Purdue was, was got some really like racist ones and stuff. So I'm still going to work on it. I do have some contacts, um, outside the FBI that have friends in the FBI. I'm still going to work on it. Um, but guess what happened in the election, Scott? People that were going to vote for Jama, people that were friends and neighbors of Jama, let her know that they didn't vote for her because of this text message. And these are friends of her. So this text message worked. How many people did it work on? I don't know, but some of her own friends said, well, I didn't vote for you because of it. And then she said, it's fake. It's not true. They used fake fears like trans rights and bathroom rights and migrant families. They used the buzzwords to scare people, to get them to not vote for us. So Ashley lost by 300 votes. She had a chance. And I don't know whether this text message caused her to lose, but I know it cost her at least some votes. How many? I don't know. But I talked to a lot of people that got this text message. I didn't get it. People sent it to me. So I, I am.
That's dirty tricks. Yeah.
I'm upset. I let Tim Peck know about it because he's, you know, he's my co-founder and he's a friend of mine and he's like, wow, I can't believe they did this. Um, the day of the election too, Scott, just so everybody knows, the Harrison County Republican Party also, um, attacked me because I went to Coorden High School and I stood very far away and I, um, tried to, I tried to talk to people about what, who, you know, that I was on the ballot, the people on the ballot were allowed to do that. So.
Yeah, like what, just outside the shoot, right? You got your 50 feet or whatever it is.
I just said, hi, I'm Sarah Blessing, you know, and, and the Republican Party acted like I did something illegal and they made a Facebook post where they used my name and they accused me of illegal electioneering because in the eighties, a retired person on the Democratic Chair, the Democratic Chair at the time, agreed in the eighties that they weren't going to go and talk to voters outside of polling places. But this was when I was a child and I was not even living here. And once I saw the Facebook post, I called up my chair, Adam Snyder, and I'm like, did you know about this rule? And he's like, no. I talked to everybody. Nobody knew about it. Adam Dickey didn't know. Nobody knew about it. So I went public about it and said it and they took the post down. But, um, I will never forget that they did that, that they used my name. And, and this makes it really hard to get people to run on the ballot when they see how they treat people that are trying to save public schools. That, that's the main reason I ran for state house was to save public schools. So, so anyway. So now that we have this lawsuit, it's ongoing. Now we have, um, Josh Bowen is president, Angie Byrne of the North Harrison School Board. Angie Byrne is vice president. This is Gary Byrne's, um, wife and he's our state senator. I'll talk about Gary in a minute. We have Chris Boyer is secretary and then Chrissy Gunter is treasurer. Chrissy Gunter's been on there the longest, but she's only treasurer. Um, that seems like a power play to me, in my opinion. And then Steve Nix, who beat Jama, um, and in one, her seat, the one she was up for, he's on the board, but he doesn't have a title. More people on this board seem to be supporting Michael Byerly than not. I've also heard that the insurance company of the school wants to settle. If, in my opinion, the school should not settle. They should go to court and they should have Michael Byerly pay for their law, the, the cost of this. Our children should not pay one dime to this lawsuit. Our schools, we should not lose any more money and we should get the money back. We need to fight. We.
Let me show you something here, Sarah.
Sure.
This, and this is, this is your AI overview, so take it with a grain of salt. But North Harrison School, uh, Community School Corporation has a budget of, looks like a little less than $24 million. So, uh, $850,000 is like, it's like 5% of their entire budget for a year.
And, and this North Harrison School Community is a small corporation and that's one of the reasons it's still so great. We have Morgan Elementary, right by Palmira. We have North Harrison Elementary and these, North Harrison, all these North Harrison ones are all right together. North Harrison Elementary, North Harrison Middle, North Harrison High School, okay? Um, so it's just four schools. Um, and it's been, the school system's phenomenal. Uh, my kids have been attending for a while. I can't believe the school system is so good still, considering how Indiana, the state of Indiana has been trying to gut public education for 20 years. Um, this seems to be the, this seems to be one thing that could really help dismantle and strip it. Now, North Harrison School Corporation's not perfect. They have problems, but if you can imagine for the last 20 years, they're being attacked by the government that's supposed to be supporting them. They're spending a lot of effort keeping the schools running and they're stressed out. The administrators are stressed and that sometimes causes them to not have enough time for the smaller issues where they could be better. So if we supported our schools, supported our administrators and our teachers and our children, imagine all of the tiny little problems that happen in our school corporation, how much better they would have been handled had we given them the right tools to succeed. So, so realize that everybody, because I've talked, I know a lot of people that have been hurt by the school system. And I'm not saying the school system's perfect. I'm saying let's, let's let them get better and let's fund them.
That's, and that's part of the, the technique that the, uh, anti-public school faction in Indianapolis and across the state likes to use, right? So, uh, you know, you've got your, you're defunding schools by law, uh, with, with vouchers and whatnot. Um, and then you have things like this, like this lawsuit. It's just another, another bomb thrown against, uh, the wall of public schools, as it were. Um, you know, every little trick in the book to see what sticks, what works. And then when, when the public schools do have problems like here, I'm, I'm looking at a, another tab over here from a, a article on WAVE and I've got it highlighted. There was a, a state audit in 2023, um, complaining about the, the North Harrison Schools and their, um, that their IEP students, you know, people with kids with special needs. Well, like, yeah, you keep defunding them and the first people to get hurt are the people that need the help the most, right? And, but then they use this as a way in to say, look, the schools aren't doing their job.
Right.
It's, it's the old, uh, why you hitting yourself technique.
Right. Now, I really want to, I don't know these people. I don't know any of the people on the North Harrison School Board. I know of them. I know some of the relatives. I know about them. I am not saying these people want to dismantle public education. I am saying there is a larger group, North Har, or Harrison County, the Republicans are controlled by two main people. And, and then they understand the Republican agenda of let's get in power, let's destroy whatever we're in charge of, and then let's cry, look how bad the government's doing. We should make it private. They get that agenda and they are working on it. And I'm not saying these school board members are bad. I am saying they're very, some of them are very close friends with the people trying to dismantle public education. And in my opinion, Michael Byerly is trying to dismantle North Harrison Schools. He appears to have had a vendetta, a vendetta against North Harrison Schools for several years, including while he was a bus driver. Um, there's a lot of evidence that supports that, that I won't get into. And Michael has done a good job of playing the victim, in my opinion. I'm getting, I've gotten a half a dozen people I've never met messaging me once I let this story come out on my Facebook, saying, poor Michael, he's the victim here. He was so wronged by the school corporation and he's just trying to protect everyone so this doesn't happen to anybody else. And I am not assuming the people telling me this are bad people. I'm assuming they're also being played by Michael Byerly. And, um, I feel bad. I've been manipulated before by people. And then once I figure it out, I'm pretty upset. I'm mad at myself, but we're all humans. We want to care about each other. Um, and so we really need to realize this story that he's putting out about him being wronged. He wasn't wrong. He made the change in the busing procedures for bids and he was outbid fairly. And by suing the school, it will do absolutely nothing to protect bus drivers, to protect other people from the school system. It will only hurt our children being educated in this public school system. It will hurt teachers. It will hurt everybody involved. Um, I, if there are any school board members listening, feel free to reach out to me. Um, but I am telling you, if you are believing the Michael Byerly sob story, that is not true, in my opinion. And one penny that goes to him is one penny too much. Now what can we do as a community, you all? Guess what? We can do some stuff. School board meetings are public. It's the second Thursday of every month at seven at the North Harrison Middle School. It's also livestreamed. At the beginning of the school board meetings, you get three minutes for public comments. You could type up your comments and, and practice them and time it so that it's under three minutes and you could go. So anybody listening, if you live in the North Harrison School District, we can stop this. He has not gotten money yet. We've, we've already, he's already hurt the schools because the schools had to pay lawyer fees. So yes, he's already done damage, but we can stop more of it. We can put public pressure on these elected officials, these school board members to do the right thing and to support our schools. We can encourage them not to settle. We can encourage the insurance company not to settle. We can encourage the lawyers to do their job and defend our children and protect them from more loss of funding. We can support our administrators and let them do a better job running our schools instead of constantly trying to dismantle their school system. Um, I would love it for community members that are watching to get ahold of me and let me know if you can go. Um, and, and you can livestream it on your Facebook. This is public record. You are allowed to livestream public meetings. So you can get your phone out and you can go to your Facebook and you can press live. You can go to your YouTube if you're, if you've got one, wherever you go live, you can do that. You can also watch the schools live. We can collectively work together regardless of your political party, because again, I worked with a bunch of Republicans that care about public education, to protect our children. We can do this. We can do this around the country. If you are watching this and you're in some other state and you're having similar issues, you can encourage other parents to work together. You shine a light on what's happening and you encourage the people in power to do the right thing. This is possible. I was pretty defeated after that text message, after Jama lost by 300 votes and Brian lost, after their people won. But it's not over and I refuse to stop shining a light on this and trying to help until it's done. And you know what? If it does happen and these school board members approve Michael and his wife to get a bunch of money and our insurance goes up a bunch, the school insurance, and it hurts our children, I am never letting our community forget that. I will continuously shine a light. These school board members voted this way. They gave this much money to these people. We should not forget it. They are actively hurting our children and these schools. So that's what we do. I need help. I am asking you, I need you to go to the school board meetings to let me know what's going on. I got Brian Tenter. If he can't go to the school board meetings, he will listen to the lives and he will come on this show when he can and he will report what's going on. I've got other anonymous sources telling me what's going on. Um, you can be one of those. Uh, side note, Scott, you know how I told you a bunch of people, um, messaged me the propaganda from Michael Byerly? I also get random people I don't know messaging me fake propaganda about other things related to the school and they are hoping that I'm going to go live and slander some person. And I do some research and find out they're trying to dismantle our schools. And the person that told me it, it's probably a nice person, probably doesn't even know that they're telling me fake information. Um, I'm going to give them the benefit of the doubt, but they were fed it by somebody else with the agenda of destroying North Harrison Schools. I'm going to let you know, if you do that to me one time, I will listen to you. I will listen to anybody that messages me. I'm not going to jump on my live and go live about it because I'm going to research it and make sure it's factual. But if I find out it's not factual, you are never a source to me again. So please understand that if somebody's trying to manipulate you to get ahold of me, I'm not going to like do anything mean about you. I appreciate you caring about our community. Thank you. But I'm not going to trust you anymore. Um, and I'm not going to viciously attack anybody either. Um, I appreciate people trying to help the community. I had so many people concerned about public education, tell me fake things like, but, but we should be supporting private education. We should be supporting charter. And then I'd explain it to them and what's actually happening. And then they'd be horrified. It's like, I'm really glad they came forward with me. I'm not going to yell at you that you're telling me incorrect things. Guess what? We're all bombarded by incorrect information all the time because people are trying to manipulate us so we get on their agenda. So we need to work together. We need to stop yelling at other people that care about education. Um, do you want to talk about some of the, uh, the crazy fake stuff happening in North Harrison that I heard on the campaign trail, Scott?
Uh, yeah, yeah. What kind of, what kind of rumors and innuendo did you get?
I got a lot of fake stuff about litter boxes.
Oh, that's a good one. Yeah.
And I tracked it down. There were actual former school board members that said it at school board meetings, that there were litter boxes in school, in the schools. Um, and then as soon as a parent hears that, they're like, destroy the public schools. That's terrible. Guys, there are no litter boxes in North Harrison Schools, okay? If you think there is, you tell me the room number. You tell me the school. I will go down there and check myself and I will report to you. I promise you with a hundred percent that there are no litter boxes in the school. That has been a very easy way to spread fear in, and to spread fear about public education and to make people jump on board for private and charter, which are not as good as most public schools and which my community cannot be driven to. There are none of those close by. In our community, we cannot afford to be driving our kids to schools far away that aren't as good. So we don't want our tax money going to those. Um, I also heard that teachers, I heard this from parents that work and grandparents that work in the school system, tell me to my face that they heard, um, teachers were telling boys they could be girls and girls they could be boys. Hundred percent, this is fake news. This is not happening. Not one teacher is saying that at North Harrison Community Schools. So please, those of you watching, get the word out that that's not true. The fake stuff about trans that they put in that text message, nobody in North Harrison School Corporation is doing anything to promote trans people. There is no trans love going on in the school corporation. Um, you do not need to fear a boy dressed up as a girl playing your daughter in a sport. Um, you do not need to fear a boy dressed up as a girl playing your daughter in a sport. That is not happening in North Harrison schools. So that's fake propaganda used to get you to be on the side to dismantle public education. It's so easy to spread the fake news and it's so hard to fight it. And we have to fight it as parents collectively. When you hear, cause I've heard my neighbors say the fake stuff about litter boxes, you have to say, you have been lied to? I am so sorry. I've heard this lie also. They're trying to get you to destroy your kid's school. This is not true. If you wanna tell me what room or what teacher, I personally will track it down because I'm friends with the administrators and the principals of a lot of these schools and teachers. So I will track it down myself. Um, so it's gossip. It's fear gossip and it spreads like wildfire because it's juicy. Um, and it's done so much damage to the local school system here. And if you are a school board member, please do not spread fake news like this at a school board meeting. It hurts our children. Please don't do that.
The, the, one of the, the things about these rumors and you know, we're, we've, we've, we've used the term like, you know, destroy our public schools or undermine our public schools. And I sort of wanna like get into why they do that, right? Uh, cause, because it sounds like a cartoonishly evil thing to do. Like, come on, nobody would try to destroy the public schools. That's like evil. They, they're just misunderstood, right? Well, no, they really do want to destroy public schools. And there's different groups of people who have their own motivation for wanting to undermine public schools. Some are like the, the, the Christian nationalists and, and the religious fundamentalists and extremists who, who think only the church should be responsible for education, right? Or you have, um, ultra libertarians and capitalists, you know, the free market above all, who thinks public anything is communism, right? Like, oh, you can't have public schools, anything publicly held is, that's collectivism, right? That's, um, that's socialism. So you know, we can't have that. So, so private organizations and charters should, should handle all the education, right? And, and, and then you, of course, still have people who are upset about, you know, Brown versus Board and that was sixty years ago now.
Right. People don't realize that in Indiana, we have loopholes set up. And when a charter school is set up, Jennifer McCormick, who ran for governor, she taught me this. When a charter is set up, they can say, we're gonna have a hundred students and we need, um, two million dollars, for example, to buy this building. So the government gives them two million dollars of our education budget to set up a charter school. And they set it up and they say, we're gonna have a hundred students. Well, they only get 10 students and the school is terrible and it falls apart before the year is over. Then they come back and they say, well, the charter school didn't do well, um, we're out. And there's no, there's no checks and balances in the laws right now in Indiana.
Right.
The person that started the charter school gets to keep the million dollars or two million dollars. They get to sell the building and keep the profit. And these people don't even, a lot of times, live in Indiana. They might live in Florida because we have people that are doing this that live in Florida. And, um, there's a lawsuit ongoing now about one of these schools that set up a charter school and they lied about how many kids were there and they took a bunch of money and it was, ended up being a fake school. So there, there are some decent charter and private schools out there, but they're also scams. And they're taking millions and millions of our school budget. And we're basically just paying these bad people that know how to scam our system. So I encourage our lawmakers to stop these loopholes, make laws so that these scammers stop doing that. Um, but it's hard to do it. Good job, Scott. You're so awesome. Um, it's hard to do that when the people in power right now want public education to fail and they wanna keep giving money to charter schools. So we know this is happening. We have proof of it. Um, we know it's happening. Jennifer McCormick knows the law. She explains the laws to as many people as she could when she ran for governor. Um, and now we've elected people in the state of Indiana that have, the majority of them have no desire to fix this, but instead to amplify it because they are in the plan to destroy public education. And I'm
And they're, they're self-dealing, right? I mean, Todd Houston, the, the, the speaker of the, the Indiana State House has an education, like a private education consulting company that he's affiliated with. Uh, he stands to profit from privatizing public schools. That's, that's disgusting to me.
I, I wish that it was set up in Indiana laws that you couldn't profit off of the things that you were advocating for, but we don't have checks and balances like that. Um, so it's a problem. Also, there's like a parent group or not a parent group. There's a, um, a group, a, uh, PAC, Political Action Committee, set up to pay, uh, the elected officials to give them money to their campaign for this legislation. And they literally write the, the bills with the loopholes in it on purpose. And then because they donated money to these people's campaigns, these people run the bills. And then since we have a super majority, um, they get voted in as law. And so it's a very calculated plan. How do we destroy public education? And it takes money and organizing and planning. And it doesn't mean we can't stop it. You watching, you telling somebody else what's going on and you voting in two years for the people that aren't doing this is how we stop it. But it is very, i- i- it does feel hopeless sometimes to be somebody in Indiana because it looks like the majority of us are just blindly voting this way. But I'm telling you, they don't know. The people, the majority of people voting don't know what these people are doing. They think these elected officials are voting for them. They vote very quietly. They're not putting on their Facebook or their media sources, the terrible bills. I, Gary Byrne, my state center is not putting out that he's trying to destroy public education, make voting, you know, to one, early voting to one week, hurt libraries. He's not putting that on his, his messages. He's doing good things, but he's secretly passing bills to try to hurt us. So we all, as regular citizens and whatever government you're dealing with and wherever state you are, we have to educate everybody else so that when we get to vote again in two short years, we vote for change and we stop this. Um, I know Jennifer McCormick got, I think, forty-one percent of the vote in Indiana for governor, which is pretty good. She did a lot better than the Dem that ran for governor four years ago. I hope she runs again. She was fantastic. Um, I told her personally how much I appreciated all that she was doing to save my children's education. I know she's not giving up. I see what she's doing. She's still very active. If you don't follow Jennifer McCormick on social media and you're in Indiana and you wanna know what's going on with public education, follow her. She lets you know. Um, people are not stopping. I know hundreds of people in Indiana, um, that are working really hard, including you, Scott. We're doing everything we can to save our kids, to save public education. Um, I wanna go to a couple of comments quickly. Um, Laura said, I have a child with an IEP and eventually he goes to Silver, and even though he goes to Silver Creek, we have issues with it not being followed and private. It's not an option for these kids with IEPs and any special programs. So that is true with charter and private. Even though they're getting a ton of government money of Indiana state taxpayer money, they can say no to any child, to any family. So these religious ones might say no to you if you're a single parent or if you have parents that are gay or if you don't seem religious or if you are of a different skin color or if you are of a different religion that they don't like. Um, or if they think you're gonna be too much of a problem and they do this a lot. If you have an IEP, if you have ADHD, if you have anything that might cause behavior problems, they will say no to you. So even though you can get a voucher front, which is our money, our taxpayer money, going to private education and charter schools, they can still say no. And they can also say no, they can accept you and then kick you out. So I heard a story of a woman whose daughter had, um, had ADHD and before the school was out, the school year was out, she was, her kid, her daughter was kicked out and had to go to public school and how much that hurt her mental health, the child. So just because you can get vouchers, doesn't mean that school has to accept you. And then there's less restrictions. The, the school has a lot more say on what they can do with your child. And they don't have the resources that public schools do to help either, even though we're stripping away those, those resources as be- as much as we can in the public schools. Um, let's see. And then Glenn, thanks for being on Glenn. He wanted me to just re- to go over what is happening with the busing situation in North Harrison because his kids go to Corden. So yes, uh, Michael Byerly and his wife, Jennifer Byerly are suing North Harrison schools for what we hear allegedly eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars because they got outbid on a bus contract. And it's even the own, like, rules that they changed themselves. Like, they did it to themselves accidentally. I'm sure that wasn't their intent. But then the school system figured it out and, and they, they hired people that bid lower amounts to save the school money. Um, and then I would, I would honestly, if my kid, my kids get on these buses, my three kids, I would like the bus driver to not have the agenda of destroying the schools. I would like that bus driver to care about my kids and the education. So just personally, I'm thankful that the school did that because it doesn't seem like he has great intentions for the school.
I mean, I want my bus driver to drive the damn bus and, and, and let, let the, the educating, you know, be done by the educators.
Um, thanks, Amy, for saying this. Uh, this is how we do this. She said, thank you, Sarah. We have to keep calling out this hor- horrible behavior that is actively hurting our communities. This is how we do this. They want us to feel hopeless. They, you know, in my own community, the Republicans have personally attacked me or whoever sent that text message was trying to hurt me. And then with the Facebook post, the Republican Party was trying to hurt me. Um, we have to shine a light on their behavior, even when it's hard. Uh, that was a hard day for me. I, I cried a few times. I needed extra hugs from my husband. Um, it was a hard election. I'm glad I did it. I'm proud of myself. Uh, it was hard. Um, we have to work together. I'm so thankful to the Republicans that got ahold of me in the county that worked with me to try to protect our kids' school. And guess what? They're still working with me. It's not like just because we didn't win, we stop and we give up. Mm-mm. We keep fighting. We rest for a day. We wipe off our tears and we get stronger and we get more people and we keep fighting. And, uh, that's the only way we're gonna do this, you all. We fight disinformation. We fight litter box and trans things and migrant fake news to scare us. And we say, you're being lied to. They're trying to manipulate you so they can destroy our schools. And we have to work together to stop it. I'm not your enemy. Just because I'm a Democrat or whatever, I'm not your enemy. I wanna save these schools with anybody else that wants to save them. And I don't care if we don't agree on everything. That doesn't matter. We're good people. We're doing our best. We're trying to help the community work together, save our schools.
And we, th- this used to be ease of, like, common ground, right? I mean, we all used to agree that communities need strong public schools. And it, you know, I think it's like really just been in the last twenty, thirty years that the movement to, to defund and to dismantle public schools has like really picked up steam because there was always that strain there. But it, it's just really picked up steam and over these last, you know, couple decades as the, the, the slow trickle of funding away from the schools has, has affected performance, right?
And, and I, I'm a former teacher. I don't know whether y'all know this, but I taught fifth grade at a Catholic school for eighteen years. Well, fourth, fifth and sixth grade. And, um, I wanna talk a little bit about my experiences. I think I might have shared this with you, Scott, on your podcast, Who's Left? I don't know. But, um, before I became a teacher, I got to, um, what is it called? I, I, I was teaching with, um, a public school when I was a senior for a semester before I graduated. And this was in nineteen ninety-nine? Yeah, nineteen ninety-nine. It just turned nineteen ninety-nine. And I attended, um, Mount Tabor, I, uh, sixth grade, Mount Tabor in New Albany. And at that time, in nineteen ninety-nine, public education was fully supported in Indiana. We had one of the best set of standards from the whole country. I listened to experts talk about it to me as a teacher, that we had the best standards or what many teachers and, and, and experts voted on as the country. We had the best standards and we had a lot of money and we had a lot of support for special education. So I taught sixth grade and in that sixth grade class, I taught three different, um, classes. And there were kids that had IEPs, individual education plans, um, where they couldn't count to twenty-five. So they were in sixth grade and they couldn't count to twenty-five. And they had, it was like three kids and they had their own instructional assistant. And they would sit with me some when I would teach and I would have some extra things for them to do while I was teaching harder things. And then that instructional assistant would help them. And we loved those children and we loved those parents and we took care of them. And, and, um, there were many instructional assistants. Uh, it was like, it, it was like there were several in that sixth grade. And then in that whole school, there were so many instructional assistants helping with kids with IEPs. There were kids in wheelchairs. There were kids with all kinds of different types of disabilities getting appropriate help, publicly funded, appropriate health and I, uh, help. And I know it wasn't perfect, but wow, is it better than what we're getting in twenty twenty-five. So since then, I stayed in touch with a lot of public school teacher friends. And I just saw the chipping away, the gradual chipping away of funding. They would take an aid away here. They would take a program away here. They would take a class that taught teachers how to help special needs kids there. And, and then you get to today where the teachers have barely any help and they don't pay the assistance enough to get quality assistance unless they're just saints that don't need the money, which we do have some of those, by the way.
Yes, yes.
So those of you that are new to public education, I'm forty-four. I've been around for a while. When I started and when I attended a bunch of public schools to get my teaching degree, it was a different picture. We can get back to there. We can do this again by electing people that want to fund and support public education and not electing those that want to give it to private charter and scam schools. We can do this. It is possible. I hope Jennifer McCormick runs again in four years. We can get her elected. If we take what happened four years ago, the Democrat won, the Democrat governor nominee and the numbers that Jennifer did, and we keep that going, she can win in four years. Um, we can collectively get Republicans that wanna save public education to vote for her. We can, in our communities, find out which people running for school board want to help the schools and which want to do the Republican agenda of dismantling it and we can vote for the right people. And then we have to not get tricked when we get text messages sent to us that say fake scary things. I mean, what do you do? Um,
It, yeah, you know, the whole school choice thing has been a very successful uh, propaganda effort, right? Um, because who doesn't love choice? Everybody likes to have a choice.
Great.
It sounds awesome, but, um, you know, that's, that's a well-crafted, well-tested message to, to hide what they're really up to. So when you hear school choice, you have to, you have to know that that is a code word for defund public schools.
Yes. And so I talked to a lot of friends and I went, I taught at a, a Catholic school. I benefited. My school benefited from the vouchers. I was told wrong things. I was manipulated by that message. I thought vouchers was a good thing. I get out of it. My kid attends public. I realized public education where I'm at was better than the private school where I worked. And I'd rather my kids go to the public schools here. Um, and then I met with Jennifer McCormick and figured out the truth. The teachers at the private schools that are wonderful and are my friends are being tricked. Um, I, I learned of students attending private schools that were trying to pump out the message, we shouldn't be getting tax money from the government. And they were being silenced by the administrators, like that, that happens, um, in Kentucky and Louisville that, at, with students because they voted on whether they wanted to allow, um, public school funds to go to private in Kentucky in November and they voted no. Even though it's a Republican state, they learned enough from the damage done in Indiana that they said no, thankfully. I'm very glad. And I'm thankful for their governor, Andy Beshear, because he publicly clearly stated that message. This is hurting. Public dollars go to public schools. You know, he publicly put that message out there. So that probably helped too. Um, I wanna say something exciting, Scott, and I'd love for you to be on it if you can. Next. I want to say something exciting, Scott, and I'd love for you to be on it if you can. Next Saturday at a three, I'm doing a live with a real public school teacher in Floyd County that has been paying attention to the bills and understands the collective dismantling of public education. She is going to come to my house. We are going to do a live and we are going to discuss the bills. So if you want to know more about how our elected officials are trying to pass bills right now to defund public education and what we can do to stop them, please attend that live. Um, you can share this to everybody. Tell everybody what's going on. Share our stuff, subscribe on our YouTube, do all that stuff because, um, we're not pumping out a right or left message. No, 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 no. I'm never a, a Dem or a Republican. I'm a, what's best for my community? What's best for my children? What's best for your children? And that's what this does. This is, takes away the stupid politics and the hate and the division. And it unites us all. So I welcome you to this platform. Um, I'm going to have a lot of you on and interview as many people as I can that know about this stuff. We're not giving up. I don't want you to give up. I know this is a tough week. I, I know that things are scary. I am also scared and have anxiety. And the only way I can, um, be mentally healthy is to fight it. Right, Scott? Isn't that what you're doing? You're, you're doing the same?
The, yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's all you can do. I mean, I, I don't know. I'm not the kind of person to just like sit in the corner and, 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 and watch these things happen, you know? I, I, I can't. It, it gives me more anxiety to, to, to think I, I could be involved and I'm not.
Yes. And my, I have twins that are six that are kindergartners and I have a fourteen-year-old that's a ninth grader. I cannot sit back and watch my children's school be dismantled from the inside with the school board decisions and at the state level. I ran for state house to try to help these schools. I am not giving up. I think the Republicans here that are running the show know that, and that's why they try so hard to stop me. And it just fuels me more. It might be hard at the time. Fine, do it to me. I'll keep having counseling and therapy. I'll keep getting as mentally strong as possible. I'll run faster on the treadmill. I'll do what I need to do to keep fighting for our children. My ask is you don't give up either. Don't lose hope. That's what they want. They wanted that text message to destroy me, to destroy Jama, to destroy Brian and Ashley. They wanted to get to us. And I say, no, we fight. We fight. Um, and we don't fight this way. We fight by building and growing. We unite. We keep going. Um, thank you for Greater Indianapolis for being on. If you would come, feel free to message me. I'd love to have you on the show. Um, we need to all collectively work together. Couple more things before we, oh yeah, let's just say, so Greater Indianapolis, um, unit thirty fifty-three?
That's NAACP unit three zero five three, yeah.
They say, um, school choice, so why remove public schools as a choice? So many families depend on and love their public schools. We must protect public education. Yeah. So if it's really a choice, they're trying to, they're choosing for us to dismantle public education. They literally want to close schools this session in twenty twenty-five. They're passing bills to choo- to close schools and to force them to be charter schools. So it's not school choice when you're taking away the best choice ninety percent of our students use in Indiana. That's not school choice. That's dismantling the main system that's working so that people profit off the smaller system that doesn't work as well.
Um, yeah, there's a, there's a, the, the, the bill where we're talking about, that's HB eleven thirty-six, which would dismantle, like dissolve five entire school districts in the state, right? Um, Indianapolis Public Schools, the largest school district in the state, which is, you know, I assume, uh, the Greater Indianapolis, double A C, uh, NAACP is on here talking about that. Uh, because those are their public schools in the state, yes, would dissolve them, leaving them without a public choice. Um, same with Gary. Um, and then same with a couple, um, smaller school districts, uh, one up in La Porte County, um, one, uh, over by Muncie, and then one, I think, uh, Cannleton, that's sort of down, uh, your neck of the woods down that way, isn't it?
Wow. I want to say one other thing because somebody's commenting that why are we making it partisan? Why are you acting like school board's partisan? School board's not supposed to be partisan. Gary Byrne, our state senator, right now has a bill trying to make school board partisan. Um, so he actively wants to make it, but even though it's not partisan, they get away with making it partisan. So in my county, in Harrison County, um, the, the Republicans sent out two mailers that put, um, how the school board, um, the people running for school board in the election this November, how they voted in the last four or five primaries. And they put whether they voted Republican or not, so that you knew which person was the most Republican. Shocking. The per, the people that were the most Republican were Michael Byerly, um, Steve Nix and Angie, Angie Byrne. And, uh, to try to pump that message. And then Michael Byrne came second. The guy that's suing our school for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars allegedly, we, we think it's that amount. Um, he came in second and then Jama came in third. Um, and then Steve won and Angie Byrne won. So I'm not trying to make it partisan. I don't want to make it part. Uh, we shouldn't put politics in with our kids. They are doing it. They are doing it. I saw signs with Republic, with the elephants on there. I saw signs from the school board, um, officials running, the elected officials running that said, make North Harrison great again. I mean, they were using all the words to show they're the Republican candidates besides actively putting R on the ballot. Since the race was close, I think that's why Gary wants to just officially stamp that R on there because if they do make it partisan, our county chairs can say yes or no to you running. So they would have just flat out stopped Jama from running and Brian and from running. And, and then we would have had to get a Democrat candidate. Guess what? In Harrison County, we have zero elected officials as Democrats right now. So that would be an easy win for them. They wouldn't have had to spend time doing all the things they did to prevent the school board members that we thought were better to win. So it would be easier for them if they just made it R and D. And, and I do not want that. I want politics out of our schools. But they're doing it. So just so you know, I'm not, I'm not advocating for making it political. I want to get politics out. Let's protect our kids.
Yeah. And there's, there's a bill about this, uh, in, in front of the state house too, right now that they're talking about that would actually make um, school board races partisan races, you know, for the next election. And yeah, at the, those are Republican proposals, right? I, I think for the most part, Democrats want to keep this thing nonpartisan. And Republicans want to make it partisan. So, well, I mean, you don't have any choice but to then get into a partisan fight.
So then you have to counter, you have to counteract and try to protect. I want to shout out Civic Impact Network. This is a good, um, group right here in Indiana. So if you want other nonpartisan information, follow them on, um, multiple places. I think they're on YouTube and Facebook that, that I know of. Um, we're going to get off here in just a minute. I do want to say we've got the live coming next Saturday at three, um, with a teacher on it. Um, and then we have the next Tuesday, January twenty-eighth from five to ten PM. We're going to do a big giant live fundraiser, telethon, raising money for Project Next Media so that we can pay our content creators, get better, uh, sound equipment and advertise because this network is going national. And we won't stop until we can shine a giant light on what is happening in Indiana and Southern Indiana. Um, I will do everything I can to protect my community. And in doing that, I want to protect your communities because I bet something similar is happening where you live. Message me. I want to know about it. Let's talk about it. Um, thank you, Scott, for being on the live with me today. Uh, you are so amazing. I, I, again, I barely gave you any time and I apologize about that. And then thank you to my husband for writing this song called Get the Word Out. He wrote it just for this purpose. We are trying to get the word out about what public school, about what's happening with public education and save it. So thanks, Scott. I'll see you again soon. Thanks, everybody. Please share. Please subscribe on YouTube. Please recommend your friends. The louder the voice, the better chance we have to protect our children. Love all of you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Even love it trolls. Thanks for coming out.
Yeah, thanks.